Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July eleventh of twenty twenty-three. With me today, I have Don Swinter and Playgo, myself, Mike Stein. It's our county supervisors. Lisa is our Jackson County auditor and Courtney Jordan is our IP person here at the courthouse. We have security. Mr. Gruber is in the back taking care of us. And I would welcome anyone that's online or here personally. So first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kinney, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. So on the agenda today first is a request that we waive the driveway permit fee for two driveways. For a nonprofit organization called Inspirational Stables. I guess I'm not that familiar with requests to waive the fees, but if that's something you typically do, I don't have any issue with for nonprofits to waive it. I mean, that's up to you guys.
Where's it located?
Yeah. I think it's three hundred and seventeen Street. Township eighty-seven North, Section thirty-one. By Piasta, so it must be up north. So you got, can you can you search that on Beacon?
I believe it's part of the Alcoa. The Alcoa estate.
Okay, so it'd be east of
It's in pretty straight up.
What was the address again?
Didn't have an address. Just come to your brain. Something did you?
Yeah.
Oh, so you didn't want?
It's a P O box, so I don't, this must be just a
Well, that's the address of the owner, probably what you've got going on there. That's not the property site though, right?
No, it says three hundred and seventeen Street.
What's that? Three seventeen?
Right there. This north way of a lot. Section thirty?
Actually, it was in thirty-one.
Thirty or thirty-one, depending on which side of the street it's on.
Because I've been feeling with these, they're
Oh, do you see it done? No, here.
Straight, three seventeen, you just straight out right there.
Yep.
So it'd be section twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or thirty, thirty or thirty-one?
Thirty or thirty-one, it's almost six, depending on what side of the street it's on.
Is it heaven or street, street seventeenth?
Street eight?
I think it's this piece. They've done, they've had several surveys done, and I believe this is the one that
Can I ask what the nonprofit does? Or is that
It's, it's reinforced, and I think they take
Okay, I've read that.
Some kind of disability in
Ecoin for him.
Heard that at the Telegraph Herald, yeah, they do. For challenged individuals, is that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the disability
So it's on the same property into the same uh, home site?
They want to build like a horseshoe driveway, so it's two driveways with a certain amount of separation for it, I understand. Or site distance, we've done everything.
Do we have policy for that? I mean, if it's two driveways, as, or is it
So we have policy for the separation, but not, the, the request is to waive the permit fee. That's the request.
Well, how much is the permit fee?
It's a hundred dollars.
Would that be a hundred dollars?
Do we know how far apart? I mean, they're connected, like you said, in a horseshoe, so basically it's one driveway?
It's one, it's, there's nothing racing to be considered two driveways.
Okay, they're just joined at the top.
Yeah, farther into the property. So the question is, do you want to waive the permit fee?
I guess, do you have recommendations?
Uh, I, I don't know that much history of, I think you've done this in the past. If you don't remember doing it.
I don't.
If you had a request in the past to do it.
I don't recall a request for that.
My question is, okay.
We have every
Permitting and doing the is there any expense to the county? Does it have to go out and be looked at for drainage, culvers, no culvers? County working, all that kind of stuff, or is this just they permit, we say yes, they put it in?
No, we have to go out and check the site distance and then determine if, if a culvert's needed and that kind of thing. So it's the same process whether we waive the fee or not.
So we've had applications for another driveway that's fairly close to the old driveway, you know, if they're gonna build a new house and they're fairly close. And whether they tie in in the backside somehow.
Is irrelevant.
To me, it, it is relevant, and I believe, to me, this is the case of two driveways.
Yes.
The case, the only issue we have is, do we feel like we should waive the fees for a nonprofit? If the site distances, everything are good?
If we don't
And if we don't have policy for that.
We don't have a policy. I don't think you can, because what's gonna
It could open a can of worms.
Big can of worms.
Yeah, what is it? Is it a five oh one C's nonprofits? So I don't, you could, you could if you wanted to do it, we could, in our entrance policy that we have, that you guys have approved, we could add language that says permit fees can be waived for entities, you know, five oh one C entities. If you want to do that, that's fine.
I, I still think there's maintenance issue, inspections, inspection time, whatever it may be, and I don't think the hundred bucks is that a lot. Just my opinion. I think it's two driveways. Every driveway is a, whether, how close they are to the next one, right?
I'm, I'm good either way, but if you are gonna consider, I think we should go back, revise the policy, have them resubmit you know, uh, for their permit, and then they, you potentially could waive the fee, but
I would, I probably wouldn't even be in favor of waiving the fee a hundred percent. I would probably do a if we did, if we did anything, I would only probably think of a portion. Like a fifty percent
I think you'd say yeah or nay and be done with it.
So.
A hundred bucks. What's the wishes of the board?
I guess I would make a motion to leave our policies as we are and not waive the fees.
Okay.
A motion second to
Deny the request.
Deny the request for a uh, fee. Non-fee, I should say. All those in favor say aye. I oppose nay. Motion carried.
All right, uh, the next item is, uh, uh, to set a public hearing for, uh, road wide away vacation. So, so this is, uh, drawing of the
Can you pull that up, Courtney Jordan?
It's, uh, advantage there on the south side of town. Right off twenty-second Street, two hundred Avenue, so old sixty-one went through town there. There's the diagonal piece of driveway that, uh, is still road road easement. It's, uh, it's currently, you know, it's being used by the land property owner as their property. So this really just kind of cleans up what's already occurring. So, uh, process is to set a hearing. We notify all the adjacent landowners, notify the utility companies, and then we hold a hearing. And then you guys can vote on whether you want to be kicked in.
Where's this setting in? I'm sorry.
Here, I gotta
Well, it's that whole diagonal piece where they have a building?
Right there. Did you see it? You guys got it.
Is it some, this piece?
We have it up now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Time?
We have it up now. Where they have buildings?
This piece right here. That's road wide away.
Oh, that road?
Yeah. This, this little strip in here.
So you're not talking about the whole triangle, you're just talking about the old road?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is it to set the public hearing.
Yep, so when I look at this, are we vacant? What portion are we vacant against the narrow strip, or when you get to the south side of the property that
Looking for the drawing I gave you. Things have to be vacated.
Okay.
Basically, we're gonna square everything off there.
That's a pretty wide easement on the, on the east side of the road, isn't it?
No, no, it's just the straight with the part here.
I get that. Well, when I'm looking at it, if you look at if you look these, but on the west side of the road, how far it goes versus the east side of the road, then you go down, I'm assuming they got a variance or something because the building technically sitting in the right way. Right, or should be?
No, what do you, why do you say that?
Right there, if, can you see the? Yeah.
Okay, scroll up. So what shaded is the right way?
Right, so on the south side here.
Down low.
Keep slide right there. See how wide that is?
Yeah.
So then it gets a lot narrower, the easement gets a lot narrower through there.
Because of the new road on the south side. That goes down to Walmart, right? Down to the Chuck Stop?
The easement width is what's in shade, right here. So the width is consistent all the way through there.
I'm, I'm talking about taking that line where you first started and going straight up.
This?
Keep going straight up. Like, what made, how did that easement? You know, that's why, where the building sits, is how did that not get included in the easement once upon a time?
It goes right beside it.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what came first, the building or the road.
Right.
So they may have described this easement to miss the building for that, but I don't, that's my question, just um, when do you want to set the public hearing?
And because Luanne has gone today, I did talk to her yesterday about this. Um, her suggestion is Tuesday, August first at nine AM.
Either zoom or
Hopefully, very well.
Okay.
It's four and twenty days for the notice, so that
Second.
A motion of second to set the public hearing for Tuesday, August first at nine AM. All those in favor say aye.
Oh. Okay, so this gets funky too, because it's within two miles of the corporation that okay, just we, we, the board must act jointly with the appropriate city or council, so I'll contact Josh. If the road is, if the road vacation is within two miles of the corporation lines of the city, which is this, the city may have an extended zoning jurisdiction applying to this area. In that case, the board of supervisors shall work with the city in order to comply with Iowa Code Section four one four point two three. So we, we could still set the hearing, that's no problem. It's just before you take action, we might have to make sure the city is in compliance with what they want to do. So set the hearing, we have the hearing, you close the hearing, and then before you actually take action, we would want to make sure that we're in compliance with what the city wants.
So we still have input at the, at the public hearing also, so that would also come into play. So we still have a motion of second on the table. All those in favor of setting the public hearing for Tuesday, August first at nine AM, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carried.
All right. Um, next is, uh, the, uh, the ditch cleaning policy. You guys have, I have copies if you want to see it. I believe I emailed it.
I, I do want to, because I want to ask a question about a certain section. Is this something new for a certain reason or just that policy?
What is this coming up for?
Uh, it's because of the fact there's huge trees growing in our right of way because they haven't been cleansed in forever.
Okay, so there's a conflict to that, because in the mowing section of this and our noxious weed ordinance would be
So this, uh, policy reflects for the most part, what we have, what we've already been doing what I would call as, again, unwritten policy. I, I, I believe there's a whole policy that we've updated, I mean, it's um, so it just talks about you know, allowing private contractors to clean ditches, that happens. So there's a section that deals with what that process. When we clean ditch, there's a section that talks about what we do with the excavative material, what the priorities are. It deals with complaints by landlords regarding upstream soil erosion or deposition on private property. Uh, talks about people wanting to fill in their dits for landscaping or mowing purposes. It deals with tile outlets in our right of way. It also talks about tile outlet structures in the right of way. And it talks about tile crossings that were required to accommodate. It also talks about farming in the county right of way. So pretty much tries to address anything that would touch our ditches as far as what we're gonna do versus what private property owners want to do adjacent to the ditch or across or through the right of way, so.
Okay, so under F, the first line states, Jackson County did not require or recommend that property owners mow the right of way area adjacent to their property. Period.
Mm-hmm.
So our noxious weeds ordinance says you should maintain that.
You should maintain it. Does it say you should mow? Because that, if it does say that, I would, I would I would change your roadside management, because if they're mowing a slope that's steeper than two to one, you're encouraging them to do something that's unsafe.
So, I mean, as far as I know, the noxious weed ordinance has been in long before, long before me, but you can't mow until July fifteenth or whatever it is.
Does it say to mow or maintain the weeds?
I think both. I don't, I, I think, I'm not so sure. It says maintain noxious weeds and brush. So to me, that includes mowing, but maybe not.
Well, you, I think you would, you're inferring mowing in your mind, but it probably says maintain, because I get, what I say is like, if you go out, if you were saying, well, the county says I gotta mow my ditch because it's in, in your roadside
No, we don't say that.
Well, then that's good, because you should maintain.
I, I just read it and I thought, well, is there a conflict there?
So I know we have a lot of our secondary roads guys, like trimming trees and blah, 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 and then they're getting hassled by the farmers that, that are my trees because them farmers are relying on them for shade for their cows and their pasture. So they're not wrong in doing that by maintaining, you know, they need to trim back a tree or cut down a tree to get the shade off the roadway to allow some sun in there for winter or
Yeah, that's part of what we're, as far as this is, they get a part of it. Yeah, as long as the trees
I just know we've had a lot of them get grief over.
And we get, we probably get more complaints about the roads being icy in the winter because the, the sun get to. So, I, I mean, it pretty much
I'm not even worried about the complaints. To me, that's a safety thing that I don't care if you complain about it or not.
Yeah.
We need to fix the safety issue.
And there's, uh, you know, I'm guessing there's room on private property to plant more trees if they want to shade for their cows too, so if the, what I, what I always say, tell the guys is if the tree is in our right of way, we don't really need to get permission to do anything unless
Well, I don't know that they're getting permission. I'm thinking it's more when they're out there working, they're
To get hassled.
It is the ownership of the tree. If your neighbor's tree crosses the property line, it goes under you, you can trim, you can cut it, do whatever if it's over your property.
Right.
So even in like in that case, I would still say like if if the tree, the trunk of the tree was outside of right of way, but there's a big limb that crossed, I would still get permission from the property owner, hey, we'd like to trim this you know, limb because it's scraping the side of the grader or whatever as he goes by.
That's great, but you don't have it.
Right. Thing, you know, it's kind of like trying to be a good neighbor.
That's a good neighbor that way, yeah.
The only thing I don't like about, I just know with that little brush off thing that we got that grinds up the trees is those daggers that stick out of the ground about that far. You know, when you get, you know, and in case somebody goes in the ditch, falls, whatever. Those are kind of an evil in their
Yeah, it's
Potential.
They, they're supposed to be able to cut those, like, the deck is, I believe, eight inches high. So if the deck is on the ground, it should bolt down to eight inches. If they're holding it up, it'll be taller, but I would, if I'm, if I leave the road and go into the ditch, I'd much rather hit a tree that's been cut down to eight inches versus one that's twenty feet tall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the chances of a weed molder right of way coming back with a, like a saw or something, cutting it down flush from the ground is
Yeah, I know, it just
So basically, this is a policy that we had that not in writing.
For the most part, but there are additional sections to deal with, like tile out, let's say that
I mean, I like that, that it's in writing and it addresses the tile. And is this, is, and other factors? Is this something that is around, around the state, or is it particular to, is this something that Clinton County also has something similar to this, or?
We have something similar. I would say
Or did you come up with it?
Then, I, I would say I would be considered the author of it, but it's kind of like a hodgepodge of what you guys had before, what we have, because I don't when I say we, what Clinton County had, but it's it's written to protect the county. And then it's also kind of written to reflect what your current practice is, right? If the current practice is good, you want to keep doing it, great. There's also like the tile crossing thing. Um, you know, we're required to do certain things by statute that we weren't in what I would call in compliance with before in the old policy.
And as far as farming in the right of way and all that, is this something that the county attorney should up there, review?
The farming in the right of way, that's, that's statute, that's state law. So, um, he can, yeah, he can review it.
The whole thing, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, he has not. I could send it to John.
I, I don't know. I'm just saying that for certain policy for the county, could we approve the policy? That kind of leaves the monkey off your back and
I think motion, we have, uh, the county attorney review that and bring it back for approval.
I second that.
Motion second to have the county attorney review the ditch cleaning policy as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Motion carried.
What time does farming one, sorry? That'll cover us for those people fencing to let their goat seek their shoulders or
So the, the fencing in the right of way
I've brought that like almost put in a temporary permanent fence that has been there for months and years and
So that, the fencing in the right of way is covered in the obstruction to the right of way section of the code, which is a different chapter. So, yeah, that's, that's straight out of the statute as well. The people that have fenced their own right of way are opening themselves up to liability if there's an accident, that fence was hit.
Well, and it's again, it's harder for us to maintain our right of ways.
It's hard to maintain the roadway on some of them.
Right.
Because, yeah, the fences, literally, you couldn't open your car door.
No, it's on the road.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I'll send it to John and, um, so, wow, next thing.
What you're doing.
Update. What? There's this. Thank you. Got a little cookie there?
Since you're gonna take that up to the county attorney, that's where they're at.
Oh, they are cookies, yeah. So this is, uh, an update, basically what's been going on as far as the maintenance department. And then also some of the things, uh, that we've been working through with the Indian Union's office. I'll just start here, go hit it real quick. Uh, so on the gravel roads, uh, we're just about done with our first round of mowing. Um, we've got a few roads in districts three and four to do. We're probably behind, but we would, we anticipated that just because of the amount of re-rocking and shaping that we're doing, um.
I want to comment that I have some really good comments on the mowing this year.
Really? Well, we're trying to get caught back up, but I guess being dry there for a while, we were getting quite a bit of mowing done too. Stuff wasn't really growing real fast when it was, had it rained for a month, but um, blader, blading guys have been out doing routine blading. Again, the policy is that the road would get bladed, uh, once every three to four weeks. Um, we're starting to get requests now for a second round application of dust controls, and so we're trying to make sure those spots are ready. Uh, we do get, we're getting some complaints about washboards. Unfortunately, on hills and curves, washboards are gonna happen. You just it's part of the, the game of having aggregate surface road. The only way to get rid of them is to cut them out, and it's hard to cut them out if you don't have really good enough moisture to do that, but it's just you know, washboards show up a lot more when it gets dry because you don't have the moisture to keep the material bound together. Shoulder reclaiming, re-rock, we got areas five, six, and eight are done. We're currently working in areas one, two, three, and four. We got about forty-five miles of a hundred miles done, so you know, we started at the end of April. We're not, you know, I think we're kind of on track to be done sometime in October, I would say. Hopefully, um. We did, uh, fix some of the, or fix the damage, uh, for the Mississippi River flooding on the Green Island Road. I've sent that cost into EMA for potential inclusion for, uh, a FEMA project. I don't know if we'll meet the threshold or not, but it's been sent in. It, and we're done ditch cleaning, uh, at five hundred and seventy-sixth Avenue. That's the bridge that we did last year by Green Island. The bridge number is Iowa zero two five two. Um, and then did some ditching and road repairs from tile crossings on a hundred and thirty-fourth Avenue south of sixty-four. And then a hundred and sixty-seventh Street, a couple crossings by Johnson Cooper property, Cooper and Cooper. K U P E R, anybody knows?
Cooper.
Cooper. Uh, and then Cornelius and Kilburg. And then we also plan on doing some more ditch cleaning on five hundred and fortieth, four hundred and seventy-fifth, and a hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue yet this year. We got a, a banquet slide repair we want to do on five hundred and fiftieth Avenue and sixty-fourth Street. A paved road, uh, the second round of mowing was completed July seventh. So the paved road mowing, I think it, we're on, we're pretty much on schedule for that. And the secondary road crews have done patching on E seventeen between sixty-one and Andrew on the Bellevue Cascade Road, west of Otter Creek on Bernard Road, south of Craft Time, and on Fifty thousand north of Baldwin. And then also kind of doing cold mix patching as needed. Then each, each, every spring, we clean and sweep the bridges and spray guardrails. Those are all done on the paved roads. Uh, the PCC patching by the contractor, uh, they got about fifteen hundred square yards done so far. Uh, out of the four, forty-one hundred square yards, and then when they're done with that, they go to D fifty-five where we got another forty-four hundred square yards to do.
Is that behind or is that even normal?
Uh, I would say that's ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Um, you know, they can pass all the way through the end of October, November, you know, so the crack ceiling work was all done, uh, in May and first part of June. All of our line painting, traffic marking, and mudjacking work has been let and awarded, but, uh, not started, uh, they're expected to be completed by November of this year. The Y sixty-one paving job, that field work is all completed, um. Right now, the next section of that, we're working on design. Work now for the check plans. They're due September twelfth. We got a proposed letting date for that job of January of twenty twenty-four. And then I reviewed the the bidding documents for the thirty-third Street Millian Overlay. Mike made those changes. He gave me those this morning. We'll probably end up sending those out today to get close to do that, so. And then on bridge replacement and maintenance, um, from the forty-ninth Street Bridge, Schrader's played on start in the last week of July. Um, hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge, uh, that Alex is designing. The preliminary plan has been approved, the check plans are due August first. Mike, myself, and Dave, we sit down and review the plans, made some, I would say, significant changes. Uh, Alex is working through those revisions now. We do have both the right of way contract sides, so the additional right of way, we need to do the job, but the, the bridge is on a skew, the the waterway hits the bridge poorly. We're gonna, obviously, the bridge will be longer, we're gonna go try and go ten feet longer and move the bridge a little bit south. We'll probably have to do uh, channel mitigation credits, but without doing that, I mean, originally, he had it designed with a gabion wall, like a retaining wall. Uh, because of the grading we're gonna do, uh, for the guardrails, so that was gonna that was gonna be an expensive thing, and those gabion walls become a maintenance issue themselves, so we're gonna, we're gonna move the bridge and lengthen it, hopefully get away from having to have a retaining wall. So that was part of one of the, the, I guess, the bigger changes for the check plan set. The city of Monmouth Eastland Bridge that we're doing for them, that survey's done, hydraulic analysis is complete. We're starting to work on the preliminary design. The concept statement is gonna be due August fifteenth. We're gonna let that August of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the day labor bridges, we just got ten of the new beams last week. We still need to get five of those, five more beams delivered for a bridge. All the steel piling and the lumber yet get, to get delivered, so, uh, talking to Schrader, they expect to start those day labor projects in mid-September. I think he was gonna go from the forty-ninth Street Bridge and start into our day labor jobs. And then we'll also be sending out a request for, for the thirty-third Street multiple, multi- And then we'll also be sending out a request for for the thirty-third Street multiple, multiplate culvert. Jane just got me the hydraulics, I just gotta review those. On four hundred thirteenth Avenue, uh, we got a twenty-four inch culvert that's failed. We're waiting on an agreement with the property owner, because part of the prop, part of the culvert sits on private property. We must have got a like a temporary easement originally to construct it, well, we need to get easement again to go back in and fix it and replace it, so.
The easement don't stay there?
Huh?
The easement don't stick?
No. So I guess I, I see that a lot here, where you. Have a fill section that goes outside of the right away, they got like temporary easement to do it. And then the eas, temporary easement goes away, and then part of our infrastructure is outside of permitted easement, so we need to get temporary easement to go back in and fix it or repair it. And then uh, we gotta replace two culverts uh, on one on seventy-fourth Street near Morehead and one on thirty-third Street near Nashville. And we got a culvert to clean out on two hundred twenty-sixth Street west of Outer Creek. It'll be sent in an agreement to property owner to do that work. And then other miscellaneous stuff, our annual report for twenty-three is due to DOT by September fifteenth, I'll be working with Stacy on that. We got our interviews for the spring brick motor grader job done, we've made a tentative offer employment, not individuals. Not been contacted yet, Stacy's gonna do that today, and then hopefully he can get his testing done. We did hold our two-day motor grader training. May thirty-first was the classroom training, we did that out at the interpretive center. Uh, we had Clinton County grader operators up there as well, and then on the second day, that was the field training out in the field, um. I did talk to the instructors and uh. They were, you know, impressed with the operator's knowledge and their willingness to learn and and and. Take ownership of the training instead of like kind of just waiting, seeing when it was gonna be over kind of thing, so that was good. Um, and then we're gonna have our secondary road safety meeting, or we had it. Uh, our secondary, secondary road safety meeting June sixth, and then we have our committee meeting, I believe is uh, next week, the safety. So. That's it.
Any questions, Todd?
Question that got brought up to me, like, when we're bringing in all these beams, so we bring them all into Macocada. They offload them. And then we haul them to Bellevue to Trader. Whoever are bridge guys that are doing the bridge work. Why can we not just have them delivered? And have one of our guys check them in that, yeah, they got delivered there. It just seems like a lot of. Unnecessary work.
Repeat that again.
So when we get beams in.
Yes.
What's told to me is they come into the Macocada shop.
Okay.
They get offloaded there.
Okay.
And then we load them up and take them to. Trader or whoever is doing our bridge project.
Okay, so that was the old way.
That just happened a few weeks.
Yes, when we. We contacted Dan to see if he could take the beams directly, he said no, he wasn't gonna have anybody in his yard to offload them. So when they get delivered to Macocada, in the past, we would load them and take them out to them when, when we just did them at straight day labor quotes. Now, as part of the bid package, he has to come pick them up at our yard.
Okay.
So we would probably help load him, but then he is supposed to come and take the beams as part of the, the new, the quotes we do now. So ideally, the best thing is, if Dan was ready, we would just have him deliver to the job site, that doesn't work out typically. The next best thing is Dan takes him into his yard. But when the, when the, the company skylight, I forget who was doing it, New Core. When they're ready to deliver, we just gotta take them, so if if Dan doesn't have anybody's yard to take them, then we, we're gonna unload them here and then Dan's gotta come pick them up in our yard.
Appreciate the info and um. Being fifty, we'll play that over and maybe visit some sites, so.
The last quick thing is uh. I sent an email to. Uh, county attorney about reviewing. The resolution and wanted to, I guess. Clarify or hopefully validate our process and the secondary road assessment district process. No, I sent it from my laptop, it shows up on my set box, but I checked with Beth and she said that she didn't get it, so I'm assuming. John didn't get it either, so I forwarded it to him again, I sent it like July first. So he, I don't think he's had a chance to look at it, so he hasn't reviewed our process, but I don't want to bring anything forward, like a resolution to. I think we were gonna set the assessment. Uh, rate in the levies to each property with the parcel number, so I have all that information from Beth, from Beth, it's in the resolution. But before I bring it to you guys to take action, I want to make sure John is. I guess clarifies our process and that we're good to go to move forward, so when he responds, then I'll bring that forward, but that's why it hasn't been brought forward yet, so.
I did have a call, wondering what the process was to contest it. And I referred them to. Your office and the county attorney, because I I didn't know the process where it could go. I know they have the right to contest it, so.
Yeah, so I think when the resolution passes, where you assign the levies and the assessments to each individual property. I think that, in my mind, that is the, that is the. Uh, starts the clock for that person now, has so many days, I believe, to, I think it's fifteen days to uh. File their appeal.
Do they get notified when that happens? Uh, when the clock starts?
I don't think so, but I was just gonna let her know, I don't think it, they don't, I don't think there's anything in the statute that requires it, so. The, the one thing that's kind of throwing me off is uh, they, the code always talks about this final hearing, the date of final hearing, final hearing, final hearing, well. It almost sounds like you need at least two hearings, like you have the hearing initially. To solicit public comment and everything, and then you have a, a final hearing where you take action and and you. You know, assess all the properties based, based on the report and everything, so. Uh, that's, that's the part of it. I'm not an attorney, I'm just reading code like anybody else, but that's kind of where I would ask, I want to make sure he's. Comfortable with what we've done to date, and if we need to correct anything, let's correct it, so we get, we take all the right steps moving forward, so.
I was gonna say, ask him, yeah, if we need to do that final hearing.
Appreciate it, the info. Thanks, Todd.
Yep.
So um, my question going forward here with our agenda, is the bid opening set at nine thirty, do must we go there or in?
It's actually set, but I, I mean, if you want to open, there's only two. There's only two bids, so.
Are you? Arlene and Becky on the agenda prior to that, are you willing to yield some time here to open the bids? Thank you. At this time, we will open the bid from the Law Enforcement Center. Center Solar Array Project.
Um, just as a point, uh, we did send out via email to eight companies to potentially bid on this project.
Um. And we got two back?
We had two back, yeah. Looks like we've received a lot of. Information.
Who the bidders are.
So this came from Midwest Solar. Cedar Falls. They have no idea where the, a lot of the bed is. This is the. A bid that I received via email, we allowed that. And I know that this came from ECG Solar.
The work.
And most of it. It looks like. And neither bided easy. So this is from EC, ECG Solar. Um, it says in the quotation. Payment option is a non-ECG solar finance. The total system price is two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. They have a federal investment direct pay program, which is thirty percent for the nonprofit. Sixty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents. With a net system cost of a hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty cents. Did you find anything?
Is there anything else on the envelope? Maybe it was a stump or paper.
No, it's empty. It's an alternative proposal. How about there? Okay, so now we're into the primary proposal, yeah. So you know what? Because this is quite a lengthy document, this is from Midwest Solar Installers. I, I believe that the bid is for one hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. So they talk about. The payback period is fifteen point three years. They believe the total payments is a hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, there's some incentives of thirty-two thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Incentives, incentives as rebate or what they call the other one, nonprofit?
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's thirty percent in both of those.
But they do talk about some rebates and some incentives, um, the investment tax credit for commercials thirty percent.
So would that come off the way or?
I think that's included in, I think that's.
So I guess it's my thought is that we should um, review.
Yes.
And. Look over the project bids and come back with consideration.
Yeah, because we don't really award the bid till next week, the way that we have it worded, so. I'm sorry, what was?
I was just saying, maybe Bruce could come in as the, the technical advisor there, because he knows all of that.
Well, we definitely need to square it up and see where we're at, bottom line, I mean, you can send me twenty pages of information, but I need a bottom line number.
Both quotes are disappointing, and either of the two banked down submitted for some reason.
So there's really nothing here to action to be taken on this, we just opened the bids and we will review them. So we will move on to Becky. Tell me Becky Chapin, our human resource administrator, good morning.
Welcome to that EMS coordinator. So we discussed this position a few weeks ago, and there was a salary range set for the position of fifty-two to fifty-eight thousand. We advertised, the committee and I um, conducted the interviews for the position, and we have made a conditional offer subject to the background process. With the board of supervisors and the association having dual oversight for the position, we would like your approval to establish the starting rate of paying for the position. And we would like that to be at fifty-three thousand five hundred, with an increase of fifty-four thousand upon successful completion of the probationary period.
Increase to fifty-four?
Two fifty-four thousand. Um, we.
And that is not increased by the percentage that was set for the budget for this year.
So the budget was set at a flat fifty thousand for the position, um, when the budget was established. So at some point, there's gonna have to be some give or take amongst whatever, whatever else was anticipated for that budget, I guess I don't know what was all anticipated. For expenses in that budget, we did kind of talk about that when establishing the salary, what would be sustainable within the budget, bottom line. And I don't know if the, we kind of talked about if there were certain things, the association and the coordinator ones in place wanted to accomplish. That wasn't allowed for within the budget due to this, they would have to come in and have the discussions with the board, because obviously in a dual role, you guys are gonna kind of direct where the position goes. I don't know what the bottom line of the budget was for this fiscal year, to be honest with you, I do know that fifty thousand was. That number that was in there.
So you said fifty-four after ninety-day probation, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no additional raise coming to the next bu- budget year, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, so it'd be split between the fifty-three, five, the first ninety days, and then up to fifty-four thousand.
So you're asking for action on?
I would ask for a motion to approve the conditional offer to candidate A at this point, we're still working through the pre-employment physical process. Um, at a starting salary of fifty-three thousand five hundred with an increase to fifty-four thousand upon successful completion of the probationary period.
And that is a recommendation from the.
The, from the interview committee, yeah, which was represented from the agents and the hospital.
Motion second to proceed with the EMS hearing as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay? Motion carry.
And then once all, so all pre-employment has been completed, I'm just waiting for the faxes with the information on them, so. Once the official appointment can be made, should be next Tuesday, we'll bring the name forward and we'll finalize that actual person. Pay rate adjustments, so at last week's meeting, the board approved an annual payroll resolution, which is done for every fiscal year. I have a few amendments to the pay rates that were set during the budget process, or according to other pay scales that were already approved. That were incorrectly listed on that resolution, so, you know, I wanted a couple of motions just to correct what had already been approved, but were um, inappropriately listed on that resolution. So these will correct the fiscal twenty-year rates for these positions, and I would ask for the final motions. I would ask for a motion to set the pay rate for the Veteran Affairs Administrator at forty-five thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents effective July one. As set during the budget process, increasing to fifty thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars effective December first, twenty twenty-three. And that is because the position was previously approved at ten percent less, as we have a new administrator. So the budget is the fifty-seven thirty-one, ten percent less effective July first is forty-five, six, five, seven, ninety.
Wishers on the board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the um, Veterans Affairs rate. As presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay?
And I would ask for a motion to approve the pay rate for the Veteran Affairs Assistant at twenty-four eighty-one per hour effective July one, twenty twenty-three, as set during the budget process.
Second, the motion second to approve the prayer rate for the Veterans Affairs Assistant as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay, motion carry.
And I would ask for a motion to set the pay rate for Corrections Officer Doug Sade at twenty-two ninety-nine effective July first, twenty twenty-three, as is set by the pay scale and effect for corrections physicians.
And that was also pre-approved, correct?
So that's a pay scale that you have, um, depending on how many years of service they have is where they fall on that pay scale, and I actually had him advanced a year when I did the resolution.
Second.
Motion second to set the pay rate for the control officer as presented, all those in favor say aye. Correctional operator as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay, motion carry.
And I would ask for a motion to set the pay rate for Pan True at twelve fifty per hour effective July first, twenty twenty-three, as was set by the conservation board.
Motion second, sets pay rate for Pan True from the conservation, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay, motion carry.
And then our new secretary of the Penrose Annex started yesterday, I originally announced her as Lucille Johnson, she is married and she is Lucille Elliott. She does not start until ten thirty, so I didn't bring her in, um, maybe since the meeting's kind of going a little bit longer, we'll get her in before you guys are, maybe at the end of the meeting.
That'd be great.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Would you tell Ruth?
Yeah.
Arlene? Good job, yeah, with, by Arlene Sharp, our Jackson County Recorder, good morning.
It's Arlene Shaw.
Next time it's just Arlene, by the way.
Okay, so basically, I just.
Okay, so basically, I just have a couple of things to present this morning. One, of course, since I'm here for the fiscal, I'm here to present my June. County recorders report of fees collected. In the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. You should have copies. And Lisa, of course, has the.
Now we do.
With that being said. I would ask for a motion to accept, place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorder's reported fees collected for the month of June twenty, twenty twenty-three. In the amount of forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents, and also from the July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirty of twenty twenty-three, amount of. Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Which is what I'm going to present next. So do I have a motion to approve those two reports? I'll make that motion.
Motion and second to approve the quarterly and annual report for the Jackson County recorders filing our fees collected. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
Okay, so just a little bit on the fiscal year report. First of all, do you have any questions?
What is, is it compared to last year somehow somewhere that I didn't have a chance to see?
It's down from last year. And of course, that's due to the economy. The county fees on the first page, I kind of highlighted that for you. So the county total fees are a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, which is down thirty-five thousand. And if you go to the second page, there is a state total there of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cents. And that's down from last year, a hundred and thirty thousand. One reason, of course, is it's not a boat renewal year.
You anticipated it being down also, is that correct? Or is that, you know, does that do anything to your budget?
It's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, in the time you pick up, things will change.
Okay, well.
Four-wheelers and boats.
Yeah, I appreciate the report, and so we've already approved the annual also.
Okay, and then also, as long as I'm here, yesterday, Glenn would have finally received by email the Iowa Land Record Annual Report. You have copies of those?
I had, I seen the email, but I didn't really chance to review the whole.
Okay, so just for the new people, just really quick, Iowa Land Records is a reporters' association entity. We created it. And so Iowa Land Records went live in two thousand and five, and then the e-submission. Where individuals and companies, banks, attorneys, whatever, could file documents by e-submitting them. That went live in two thousand and seven. And within the last six months or so, Iowa Land Records now has a new e-submission process, which is much more, much more user-friendly. Much easier to use. And eventually, soon, they're going to have an Iowa Land Records search entity that's new, and I've seen it. It is so much easier to use, so we're happy about those two.
That will be accessible to the public also?
You have to be a registered user.
Okay.
So that is something an individual would have to contact Iowa Land Records for.
So as. Employees, we are eligible users, is that correct?
Sir, no, you'd have to apply.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and a couple of things that as recorders, we have Iowa Land Records working on is. We want them to develop an online DNR. Payments section for all Iowa reporters to use so that we can do renewals for boat, snows and ATVs online. So they're working on that. The other thing that at our last meeting, we asked them to make a priority in their work schedule. Would be to create a fraud alert program within Iowa Land Records. So all county recorders daily have files. Then they go through redaction, then they're put on Iowa Land Records as public documents, indexing and imaging. And so this fraud alert program is something that has become popular in other states. And in the larger states where you see a lot of summer homes and those sort of things, there have been some fraudulent filings. Whereas at the county level here. You know, between the three of us, we kind of know most people in Jackson County, so documents come from reliable attorneys, that sort of thing. So this program then would, an individual could sign up for it. Through Iowa Land Records. And if your name appeared on any documents that were filed in the state, then you would get. An email or a text, whatever entity you sign up for to get a notice that your name was in a document that was filed in the Jackson County reporters. So it's just a broad alert program. I think it's something important. You don't see a lot of that in Iowa yet, but it's, it's out.
Well, I think it's good oversight. Yeah, I mean, I mean, you like to be notified if somebody's doing something, that'd be your name, yeah.
Yep, and I have had a company from Rock Island come in to give a quote for their fraud program. But for a small county, it's, it's pretty pricey, so I don't know where we would come up with that money. So some of us were talking and having Iowa Land Records develop this for us just makes sense. So. I think that's it. Any other questions? Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, you too.
So Ruth. Ruth, we're joining us from our zoning department. Good morning.
And so we have three. Properties that we delight there are requesting extensions for their violations and violations. I don't know, we can start with Hartman, if you like, two, three, three, one, one, for Shore Drive. I spoke with him, so he has an extension right now until the thirtieth of June.
Thirty of what, June?
I'm sorry, July, I apologize. I spoke with him yesterday to see if I could get some updates on what he's doing. I couldn't get new pictures. So these are the pictures that we took from June. But so he hired a company to finish doing the grading in his, in his property. So this is the one across the street from his actual house, where he's kind of storing his supplies. So he just hired a company to finish grading his entire yard. They're going to bring in the black dirt. They're going to do all that grading. And then they're going to use that gravel to kind of finish out, and then he's going to lay all those pavers. So he said he can't lay the pavers, he can't get the pavers off the property until he has the lawn grading done.
Is there a timeframe on the contract?
So he said that's going to start next week. He did not know exactly how long it would take to finish that, but then once that's done, he's going to grade here. He's going to move the pavers over. He said he has, I asked him if he was out there yesterday. He was sending me pictures, but he wasn't out yesterday, but he said he's, he's. Compressed the gravel pile, so it's, it's a nicer looking pile, and he's also. Done the pavers, packed them up really nicely, and then he said he does have a waste pile that he's going to remove.
So what I see in the background, that's the pavers?
Yeah, those are the pavers.
And what kind of extension is he asking for?
Sixty days.
Well, I'm sure if he's got contractors, they're going to start next week. There's. Almost three weeks left in the, in the month.
In July.
I would like to see our progress, where we're at at the end of July, if his extension. Was his extension through the?
I don't.
I think it's the end of June.
Six thirty, I think it is, because that's what it says on the, on the.
Because we took everybody till the end of June.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so that would give him till the end of August.
Yeah, that would give him the end of August to finish the entire.
Thirty days and see our progress. Would be my motion.
I, I don't mind giving them the extra thirty if there's progress being made. If, if. He does hire a contractor, it's very positive to me, you know, that he's not trying to complete this by on his own. Again, do you want to wait until the end of July and extend it, or do you?
Well, he's out of his extension right now.
That's right. So you're either going to give him thirty days, or you're going to give him sixty, which is, you know, it's either end of July or end of August. Otherwise, you, you're, you're going to.
Right.
Serve him now.
Yeah, because he is out of his.
I would. I guess I would like to give him till the end of July, but. So I'm thinking by the end of July, these people need to be. Wrapping up. I mean, we can't keep doing.
And Lori's recommendation for all three was an additional thirty days. So that's what she had in her.
So that would be end of July.
That would be end of July.
Well, I'd like to see if action, I guess.
I would make a motion to extend Hartman thirty days till August first. With all the contractors there.
I'm going to back up this slightly. Did you make a motion, or that was just an opinion?
No, that was.
Yeah.
Okay.
A motion and second to extend Hartman for a thirty day extension as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And then the next one is Cashman, he's one zero, one zero, zero Rock Drive. He has a. A trailer. That is being used for storage, it looks like. So he has a trailer. He's trying to contact the gentleman who. Who's renting it, I guess, so they can get their stuff out before he gets rid of it.
How can you be using it for storage and renting it at the same time?
Well, he's renting it for storage. Is what, is what I understand. And he said he's having trouble getting a hold of the person.
Has there been? There hasn't been any action on this property then?
So this, no, this one just got served. We have not granted any extensions. This is, this is a new, this is from the second batch.
Alright.
Yeah. So he's trying to get.
Well, I guess logic says we give everyone else so far an extension.
I would make, I would make that motion to give him an extension, but. I'm not. I guess if this comes back in August first. I would probably be opposed to giving a further extension.
So he was just served.
If he's not on it, if he hasn't been notified or extended, thirty days would be the middle of August.
So when, when he was served, what, what was the timeframe?
It would have been the first week in July that he was served.
So how much time did he have? To complete this?
He would have had, well, he would have had. So it would be thirty days already.
So he's already into August. He's, he has until August, the first week of August.
August already.
To complete it.
Yeah, so he's asking for an extension from that.
I, I would, we can, I would motion we table this till the first of August.
I, I don't know that. I need three weeks to try to get a hold of somebody. You're not making much of an effort. I, I don't know where he lives, but I can almost drive the other side.
He's rented from you.
Again, going forward then, yeah, come August. To me, that's not a. Thirty enough reason to keep getting.
For an extension, that needs to be.
To keep getting an extension. I would say I would like to see him wrapping that up by. His August first.
Wrap up by the deadline.
And if his deadline was before August first, then yes, I would give him August first. I make that motion.
Motion second to. Deny the extension and to notify of completion by as notified previously. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And then I believe that you have the letter from Black Hawk for his extension that he's looking for. Otherwise, I have copies I can give you as well.
Could you briefly go over that? I probably read it last week.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I said it wrong. He's two, two, eight, three, eight, West Circle. So he has. Some. Campers and storage vehicles and things. So what he's requesting is campers are used as storage, the old mobile homes are used for storage, the barrels are for cans and bottles, they get dumped when they are full. The milk crate is used to set the motorcycle on, and the boat that is by the fireholder is used in the McCooper River. The other is used in the Mississippi, however, they are not registered. The plans are to keep the jet ski placed under the green boat and the grain wagon or barge box works perfectly. The two by tens and two by sixes all have purpose and intended to be used, plans to use within the year. The shed could be built back within the year.
And when was he served?
He would have been served in the beginning of July as well. He's in our second.
So is he had, he was already given one extension, is that correct?
He has not been given any extensions. He.
Basically trying to say that none of this is a nuisance.
That's kind of the, the feeling that I got. Essentially, he would really like it if you would go out and take a look. He doesn't want you walking on the property. He would like you to just look from the road. Because, and make it, kind of make a judgment call on that as to, as to what, how.
Well, another gentleman asked to use a trailer camper to storage, and we said no.
Correct.
So in an effort to be consistent, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you give me the address again?
Sure, it's two, two, eight, three, eight, West Circle.
Can I have the copy of that letter?
Yes, yes, of course.
Didn't he meet us out there?
He is willing to. His phone number was sent to you via email. He does not actually get phone service where he lives, so you would need to text him, and then he will text you back when he has phone service or call.
You don't get phone service, but he can get text.
That is possible.
Not, yeah, and not really, so not really. He said he doesn't check his phone messages because he has so many of them, because he doesn't have service. So when he gets to a place where he has service, he's more likely to check his texts than his voicemail. So he requested that he be texted, and then he will respond. That way.
Okay.
So, um, do we have action on this? We do have action on this.
Do you see any activity on that property whatsoever, other than him saying, this is a joke?
Um, no, but we have not been that. To be honest, so.
I mean, even, even for the things he addresses, like you still have a stove, you have bucket, you had a bicycle laying in the weeds, weeds growing.
The bucket is to put stuff in.
And I think he does, I mean.
The whole land is to set stuff on too, Mike, but.
I do think that he. He did make the impression that he wants to build a storage building out of some of the things that he is storing. I'm not sure if then he will put some of these items in the storage building. He does want a year.
I'm not seeing much on there.
Okay, so when is his deadline again? I'm sorry.
His deadline would probably be the first, around, right around the first August.
Okay, well, that, to me, that deadline is going to stay in place until I see some activity. That's just my opinion.
You can give him a warning that we've denied storage trailers as campers, so.
Storage camper.
Is, is there a motion to effect to deny extension?
I'd be not, I'll make a motion to deny his one year request for an extension.
Yeah, because he is, he is asking for a, a year.
And it did not include any extension at all, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
A motion and a second to deny extension as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion carried.
And he does, I mean, if. He does, he would really like you to review it if, you know, if you can, just to take a look at the property and see.
Don't go near it, but look, right?
Yes, you can't actually go on the property, which we did not either. We, we only took pictures from.
I, I can see pretty well from here, actually.
Right, yeah, so. So yes, that's up to you, but that was a request, so has been presented. Alright, thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Yep. Alright, have we caught up? No. Sorry. Okay, thank you very much. It looks like Jeremy's here in, in John's absence, is that correct?
Yep, just me.
Did invite Jeremy Odenup from Midwest Construction Consultants.
Morning.
For an update on our law, laws, law center.
Yep. So going along pretty good. They're pouring concrete out there today. That's the remainder of the interior floor, save for a couple of showers we got to pick up. The roofers are about ninety percent done with the membrane. That's coming along very nicely. They got to do the cap metal and everything yet too. The block layers did show up yesterday. We got started building cells, and most of the detention doors are set, and then they build the, the walls to that and everything, so. That's moving along nicely. The electrical rough in and the correctional, I put it about sixty percent. Security frames, fifty percent. Precast repairs are to finish this week. We've got the water on.
I'm sorry, can I, can you elaborate on that just slightly?
Yeah.
Precast repairs, or is it damaged one setting, or?
No, precast always has imperfections.
Okay.
And they, they come out. And they they come out and they they rub them out, they, you know, sometimes. And this guy, John, I've worked with him on two other jails, he's really good and everything, so uh, if they have some. Sometimes you'll have in your precast uh some iron. That will have to be dug out and and filled back in, otherwise it'll rust down the side of the building, things of that nature, you know, so. Uh, repairs maybe isn't the correct word, uh, you know.
Yeah, I understand, so I guess with that being said, so what kind of warranty is on that, I mean, you see that periodically. Even on flat work or concrete, whatever, that will pop with heat and cold, so them little repairs will pop, is there something that? That we guarantee that they just won't pop either a year and?
Well.
We got Russ running down inside of it.
I'll tell you, uh, yeah, uh, these guys are good about standing behind stuff, I've got up in Delaware County, the jail that we did up there. We've got a substantial crack in that precast and that jail was, we did that in. Well, twenty twenty, it was during COVID. And I talked to Russ from APC and they're on their way up there to fix that and it's out of warranty, so I mean, you know, they they stand behind the word. So, um, they're they're good about that and everything, so. Um, Steve Clucky is to tie in the sewer early next week and then the grading will follow. On that, so talk to him this morning, um. Don't have all the numbers for the alternance yet, but we are looking a lot better, we've got the numbers for the HVAC, we've got the electrical. I'm getting the GC today, I'm getting the plumbing today, talked to Kraus this morning. I'm getting the sprinkler today, talked to Randy Rock this morning, need hard numbers, I'm waiting on detention. And the grading from Steve and when he gets out and starts tying in the sewer, you know, I think we're gonna. Be able to get a number from him on that.
So is there extra grading because of the additional messing?
No, no, but that is a number that.
The hillside versus.
Gonna be an outstanding item, Don and I have been working together on this. Yeah, I'm sorry, not to confuse anybody, doesn't have anything to do with the the messing.
All right.
That's an unknown number because without the retention wall, he had to grade that out.
That's, yeah, basically.
So, yeah, I was gonna ask about the grading on the, for the retention wall or not the retention wall or whatever it may be.
John got the um, the control points to Steve and Mitch and we met with him. Two and a half weeks ago, something like that. And he said he was gonna have, you know, a window of opportunity to get out and and that is gonna be next week, so. Um, he's gonna tie in the sewer first and then tackle the grading, so I would like to see a number out of him. Before we tackle the grading, you know, other than just a, you know, time and material type deal, you know, so. But uh, yeah, I'm waiting on the detention, I've I've been calling uh. Don at Stronghold like every day and John sent some emails and stuff, so. I mean, I'm staying right on him to get these numbers and everything, so. I've got Randy Rock from Midwest coming out tomorrow to look at, so he's doing the sprinkler at the jail. And Fairgrounds and everything, and I told him this morning, I said, I need that hard number. So I would presume that he would give me that tomorrow when he comes out, so. Doing everything again, you know. I didn't realize this was gonna be this much of a hassle to get some numbers out of people on something that they had already bid prior, but. You know, they have to go back to all their suppliers, they have to, you know, all that stuff and a lot of those suppliers. Don't put it as a priority unless they're really pushed, you know, and I mean, I can push the contractors, but I I can't push their suppliers. So I think that's what's kinda, you know, run us around and everything.
Well, we appreciate your effort and your ability to stay on top of it and uh, update us as as you can, I guess.
Yep, if anybody has any questions and if anybody wants to stop out at any time, feel free.
Might get that yet afterwards here, if I got some time I.
Yeah, maybe Thursday I might come out, cause I'd like to walk through the rest, I didn't know if to go through the.
Yeah, they got uh all the stud walls up and everything, um, obviously, we can't sheet rock until the electricians get in there and get their rough in. Which is gonna be a bit, but uh, it always is. And I got uh duck work, uh, John Curdles, he's with Geisler, I worked with him on the jail in Wakan, he's really good. He's gonna come out supposedly Thursday and start uh hanging some duck work in the admin, so. Get that rough in around the exterior, we can get that spray foam up and, you know, and get some windows and start hanging some sheet rock in there.
Appreciate it, so. Yeah, are you guys, are you scheduled, Jeremy, for like every couple of weeks, is that?
Yeah, we can just keep a running schedule.
Why don't you just do that, yeah, if there's not a lot to report, it won't take long, if you got time, you know. If you can't, if you can't, just give Luanne a blow or something, say you're busy.
You're all your numbers, get on our schedule.
Well, even before that, when they come in, I'll I'll be giving you a call. So.
That'd be great.
I hopefully by the end of the week.
Okay, where am I, how far am I going back?
Yeah, I think I'm in.
Okay. You are doing double duty.
This morning I need to approve the minute for the June thirtieth twenty twenty three board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. I'll make that motion.
Motion and second to approve the minutes from the June thirtieth forty twenty three board proceedings as written, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listings in the amount of seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. I'll make that motion.
Motion and second to approve the claims as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the reappointment of Peggy McMurray as the representative for the auditor on the compensation board. Effective July first twenty twenty three through June thirtieth twenty twenty seven.
Motion effective to approve Peggy McMurray as a representative for the auditor of the compensation board as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion into, motion needed to approve invoices for seventeen thousand four dollars and thirty-seven cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. One thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars to Chosen Valley Testing. One hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and four dollars and fifty cents to Bill Bruce Builders. Twelve thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety cents to Kraus Plumbing and Heating. Fifty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents to Geesler Builders. Seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Rock River Electric Inc. A hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. And one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars to Republic Services. For a total of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and one dollars and seventy-three cents. Of which fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars was paid through the American Rescue Funds or ARPA. And authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center for the month ending June thirtieth twenty twenty three. I'll second.
Uh, I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for six thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-six cents to Midwest Construction Consultants. Five hundred and sixty-five dollars to Chosen Valley Testing Inc. Sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and three cents to Peak Construction. Four thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars to Hometown Plumbing and Heating. Twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents to Stickley Electric. A hundred and twenty thousands to Tri-State Porta Potty Inc. Seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixteen cents to Bellevue Sand and Gravel. Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents to Joel Wood Plumbing and Construction LLC. One thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Hayes Family Farms. And three hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents to Republic Services for a total cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and seven dollars and forty-five cents. And authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU. The four H Outreach Center for the month ending June thirtieth twenty twenty three.
These claims are included in in the.
They are part of that seven hundred and seven.
So there's five hundred thousand dollars in what she just said.
Well, there's only of that, we only pay the uh three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Of the seven hundred and seven that you approved, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand came from the county. The rest of that is, comes from the Together We Build funds, so, yes.
Okay, and motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented for the. Fair and ISU extension as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
With Luanne being gone, um, the calendar for the week is set this morning, we're going to have an eleven o'clock work session for the opioid settlement. Uh, at three o'clock, um, via Zoom, it sounds like, or maybe at the library after the green space redevelopment. And at four o'clock is the McCoqueta River uh Water uh Watershed Authority Executive Meeting via Zoom by for Don. Tomorrow, it looks like, Mike, you're on KMAQ at nine o'clock. And there's art in the park tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock. On Thursday is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting at noon via Zoom. And there is a meet and greet at Clover Ridge at five o'clock. Friday, it looks like there's nothing on the calendar. But starting next Monday, July seventeenth at three o'clock, there is a Mental Health and Disability Services Governing Board meeting in Davenport for NIN. And then that night at seven o'clock is a Together We Build meeting. And we're back here next Tuesday um at nine o'clock for a regularly scheduled board meeting. With that being said, Luanne uh would like me to. Present, um, I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signature on the Mississippi Valley Workforce Chief Elected Official Shared Liability Agreement.
Um, what that is, is they've just kinda re-updated that and kinda brought it up and they sent it out to each of the counties to approve it. We're um, we're just one of the counties that we have to approve, a lot of the other counties already have, so I would make a motion, we'll go ahead and prove that workforce agreement.
We did get emails explaining all that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO Shared Liability Agreement as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signature on the letter of support. To the United States Department of Transportation, safe streets and roads for all, uh, for the city of McCoqueta.
And basically that's our support to the city supporting the improvements.
It's a grant.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the letter of support for the SS or A grant as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve the reappointment of John Manson and Mike Burke. For the Jackson County Planning and Zoning Commission, each for a two-year term until April sixteenth. Twenty twenty eight, that makes no sense.
It'd probably be a four-year term, is that correct?
Well, that's what she's got on, you know, on here, she's got expires four sixteen at twenty twenty eight.
Zoning is a five year.
Okay, that is a five year.
It's a five year term, you know what, I think I read that wrong, so it's a five year term ending April sixteenth twenty twenty eight.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve John Manson and Mike Burke on the zoning. Commission as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, carried.
And I also need a motion to approve a firework permit to Boyd Davis at fourteen five sixty-six one hundred and Street McCoqueta. For fireworks display on July twenty second.
No, it's for um, July twenty second and the rain date is July twenty ninth. And here's the site if you want.
Is this outside of the state guideline? When fireworks can. It's not that, didn't that, when that got passed, have a rating show?
They couldn't be sold before the twenty-third, two, the twentieth, the twenty-third of June. And I thought it ended like the tenth or, but then you can do it like.
When you can shoot them or when you can purchase?
Purchase, they they regulate.
So, yeah, and I don't, yeah, I don't know that they regulate.
That just regulating the purchase. Make a motion to approve that as long as within the guidelines there.
Motion and second to approve the firework permit for Boyd Davis as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today. And I know that uh Attorney John Keys had talked to Luanne earlier and said that there is a court case going on right now and he may not. Be able to uh come down and talk about the possible enforcement on the um nuisance violation.
This is regarding to the letter from the individual um. Including our access. Even our authority to do it the way it looked.
If he's available.
So he don't have a an opinion. Okay, well, I appreciate it. And. Well, not unless they show up. I couldn't find out, um. If John is available.
When she came down here, that's what she was, she didn't think he would be available, but we could call him.
Jess said that when she was done? We'll take a short recess at this time. At this time, we will.
John, 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 yeah.
Reconvene our meeting and uh we've been informed that Mr. John Keys, your county attorney is is not available, is in a trial. So we will table that and is there any other business before the board?
Motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all.